Proceeding so that anybody who want to, anybody who want to follow up and follow up the recording. Uh I just want to do, allow me, maybe I'll ask you for your, that we, for your uh um. Uh guidance, I, we want to make a prayer so that then we are welcome people. Then you moderate, I'll just give the, the digits and then we, you, you proceed on, if that's okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. So, welcome everybody, shall we pray? Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we want to thank you and honor your holy name. Thank you for your, your guidance, thank you for your blessings this evening. Uh we want to thank you as we join this uh Bible study series. That you're going to be with us and guide us even as we are guided through this Bible study. Want to pray the Lord even as we organize and uh uh uh, I mean, arrange ourselves to how we shall be doing it this. For that God will bless us and be with us, for it is in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Good, so good evening, I hope everybody can hear me. Please, if you can hear me, just give me a thumb up, so that's. I can see you have quite a number of people, uh huh, thank you very much, I can see people are on board. Uh thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Um and it's good to see all of us. This is uh the Bible study series that we are talking about walking with God. Uh my name is Getonga, just in case he's seen somebody here who we have not met, but I am going to assume that we have met. I am joined also with my brother, uh by my brother Calvin's Abock. Calvin's Abock is one of us, and maybe some of us have not met him. But he has uh been working with us as, yeah, the parish, uh uh intern. But he's a great man of God, who will be uh basically uh championing this maybe. And uh we have had invited us to a series of uh uh one month uh work with God. So, working with God will be our theme and uh uh we want to just say that we are glad that you have found time to join. And we will be strict on time so that we don't punish each other. So, we start on time, we add on time. Uh Calvin's will be sharing uh diff- uh uh materials that we will possibly be using. And uh I hope that uh for those that are coming to, to us online, you also enjoy. There are those of us who possibly will come physically, but we said we are doing a blended kind of an approach so that nobody misses out. Unless they have other reasons. So, uh feel welcome and uh let's engage, let's us talk. And uh Calvin will advise us whether he wants us to do how many questions today. Or which topic, or it will be just an introduction of the whole entire scope. Uh he'll tell us how we want to approach it. And then uh we will be given an assignment possibly to lead us through uh the week. But I'm sure this will be a good engagement and I believe all of us will benefit from it. I want to plead with us that uh one of the things that discarded people is when we don't keep time. Or when we don't uh start on time and end on time. So, I pray that we shall have good connectivity for those that are online. And uh those who are physical, they will always keep time. But I want to say that, yes, as much as possible, we don't start on time. And uh we be, I believe um we'll be able to proceed on together and seamlessly. So, welcome to the series and God bless you so much. Uh maybe before I head over to uh uh Calvin's. I believe all of us maybe uh from PCL and that, but in case you're out of this uh parish. You will be more than welcome. All the same, let's feel free, let's us engage, it's not, we're not coming here to be taught. We are coming to do a study together, so feel free to ask critique and order. Thank you very much, uh Calvin's, and as I told you, at one point I'll disappear, but I know we, you are good driver. So, take it away, brother. The audio is good on my end.
Okay, uh thank you. Praise the Lord, everyone.
Man.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for confirming that you can hear me, you know. This online platforms, you can assume that people are hearing you, but uh but addressing yourself. So, welcome to our Bible study series. And um just like you've been told, it is a series. We are going to, to have it. And so, we are going to do the series of working with God. And uh today, I just want us to, I just want to share something. You look at it, it is going to be our guide. Throughout the study. I believe you can see it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, um the series is going to have four sessions, or rather, four subtopics. And um the first one will be what does it mean to work with God? Which is uh going to be discussed today. And the second one will be reasons of working with God. And the third one will be characteristics, what are the traits? What are the indicators of working with God? Or what is it that if we see, we can really attest that you are working with God? And uh we will also do what are working with God involves. And so, there are the misconships, uh I mean misconceptions and the myths of uh working with God. Which we are going to look at deeply so that by the end of this, we are sure of what working with God entails. So, we need your participation, we need uh your contribution. Uh so that we don't make it something which is just centered around us. But you also being part of it, that is the reason why you are also joined. So, the Bible study has been organized by the pastoral team together with the church leadership. And it is commencing today and it will run for four consecutive weeks. And uh just like Toshia said, the meeting will be hybrid or blended. Which means we have some people on board physically attending and uh them that also joining online. So, we are looking forward for a pop-up study, which will finally reciprocate to yielding fruits in our Christian life. So, the major purpose of the Bible study is just to enable us to grow spiritually. And uh we don't expect us to remain in the same place where we were when we received Christ. But that physical manifestation of Christ in our lives and also yielding of fruits should be evident in our, in our work with God. And so, as I said, uh today we are going to do the first one. What does it mean to work with God or what it entails working with God? And uh what we're going to check is um how can we say or how can we be certain? That you are working with God or what is it that when a person is doing? We are saying that uh he or she is um working with God. And so, uh in, 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 in a Bible study, people do discuss. And uh people air out their views, people giving what they think is right. And maybe if uh somebody has a different opinion or what the other is saying. We just discuss reasoning from the Bible and uh we get helped. And so, they, uh the study just starts and our guiding verse will be just um. Genesis, chapter five and verse twenty-four, uh the verse which we, 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 we know. Uh Genesis five, verse twenty-four. And the Bible says. Anok worked faithfully with God, then he was no more because God took him away. So, that will be our guiding verse, or that will be rather our theme verse as we go through this uh Bible study. So, just to start by posing a question, what, what is it or what it entails to work with God? We can start from that point. We are around nine. So, it's going to be an open discussion when we say that I'm working with God, what do we mean? What really do we say or what should we say? That so-and-so is working with God. As the Bible says that Anok worked faithfully with God, then he was no more for God took him. What do you think or what is your perception when it comes to working with God? Yes?
Yes, I, I would say that uh working with God entails obedience. To his uh commands. Which basically are the ten commandments and. Everything that arises there from, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Uh working with God entails obedience to his commands, uh which is basically the ten commandments, okay? Any other?
Uh I would say, working with God us involves doing the right things in the eyes of God. And as Mary says, one of them is obedient, denying yourself and for God in the right way. And always do according to his will. So, the right things in the eyes of the God is like bearing good fruits, like being kind. Giving service to the others according to what God has commanded you. And the six, the six, um what is this? Uh I mean bearing fruits, all of them like kindness, service to people, service to God. And like that. Was I heard?
Yes, yes, you heard. Yes, we did.
Hello?
Calvin's, you're breaking up.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Let's turn now.
Giving a point of doing the right things.
Uh we can't hear you at all.
Yes, we can't hear you.
Hello, can you now hear me?
No, I can hear you.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry. It's uh due to network issues. I think I got, I got, I, I got lost in the conversation when um there was a point being aired out on uh doing the right things. That is bearing the good fruits. We can go to the next. What is it that comes to your mind when we talk of uh working with God?
Um. I would say.
Yes.
Working with God is basically listening to him. Most likely, when you read the word of God, you're working through with him. Because uh most of the things that are being done in this world are written in the word of God. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, Marcy. Listening to him through his word. Is basically reading the Bible. Okay. Any other?
Yes, maybe uh in prayer, seeking his guidance, his will. And uh his design, his purpose for my life and also. Uh prayer-free submitting to him. And in prayer, seeking uh to, to be able to do his will. Thank you.
I would also say that um we may not see uh God working, working right now. But it is our trust and belief that he is with us and he's preparing us for blessings in our lives.
Wow. Who has not talked? Brenda, have you talked? What does it entail to work with God?
It's not man that we can just talk to, it, it is faith. And then just believing in his word and trusting him.
Uh most of the times uh we get to ask ourselves, we get to know. What is it that this working with God is all about? And um maybe several people may describe working with God. Uh in the Bible, beginning with just the verse we have read of uh Anok in Genesis five twenty-four. How he worked with God, you know? The Bible does not describe so much about Anok. We are only told in fact from verse twenty-one to around verse twenty-four. It only gives the genealogy of, of, of how Anok came about. And then verse twenty-four just describes it, Anok to work with God faithfully. Then he was no more before God to, because God took him away. And so, uh the Bible sometimes describes um people like Noah. And the Bible says that in Genesis six, that Noah was described as a righteous man. And he was blameless among the people of his time. And so, in terms of working with God also, we can talk about being righteous and being blameless. Praise the Lord. Yeah, and a lot of points have been given of what it entails to, to work with God. Obedience to his commands. And uh you can't really, you can't really work with God. Or we can't say you are working with God if you are not obedient. You have, you have to be obedient. So, obedience is key uh while, while, while working with God. And also doing the right things and talking about bearing the fruits. And I like a point which uh somebody gave that uh sometimes you don't need to see God besides you for you to say that you're working with him. But you will really know when you evaluate yourself that you are working with God. When it teaches that point of evaluation, then you will have known the truth of um saying that sincerely me. I'm not, I don't think if I'm in the right path or I'm in the right way of um working with God. And so, as we continue, if you have your Bible, we can read uh. Mica chapter six, verse eight. And if anybody is close to his or her Bible, you can read for us, Mica six eight. Anybody?
I am here.
Okay, okay, we are no go.
Ah, no, jokingly, thanks.
Mica six eight?
Yes.
He has showed, he has shown you, oh man, what is good? And what does the Lord require of you? To act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God.
Yes. Now, this is Mica just uh asking and posing a question on what God desire. To us, he is just giving us a glimpse of what God desire for us. And part B of, of Mica six eight, it says to act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God. If we can just um focus on to work humble with your God, it's also part of uh working with God. So, it means in the process of working with God, God also desires humility while you are working with him. What can you say about humility while working with God? Humility is an aspect of working with God. How can you explain the perspective of being humble uh when working with God? Yes, how can we explain the perspective of being humble? Remember, the Bible says that what does God desire of us? To act justly, to love mercy and to work humbly with him. How can we describe the aspect of humility while working with God?
Uh, what I'll try.
Okay.
Uh in my uh humble uh opinion, I think humility. Uh in this sense, uh how do I face it? Uh let me give an example in scripture, when, when the Bible says that uh we are the bread of Christ. So, even, even in our uh, the way we've, we've seen our parents model for us, especially our mothers. Where they submit to our dads as the husbands. So, we also ought to be submissive in a way. Uh but it is, it is relevant, it is a, for a point of revering who God is. Uh that is, that is what I think uh working humbly with him means. Uh basically could recognize that he is uh, he must be first. In our work, in our relationship. Uh because uh, and just to quote what uh our evangelist preached on Sunday. Uh from James chapter four, verse seven, uh uh we see that submit yourselves then to God. But right before that verse, it says that God opposes the proud, but shows favor to the humble. So, I think uh for me to be humble is, is for me to submit myself to him. Uh for him to be Lord, uh so to speak, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Miano. Uh submission and allowing, allowing God to take the preeminence. Which means uh whatever God says is the final. So, you submit fully to God. Very profound, powerful. Yes. We are continuing, we, we, and we have not stopped. What is your take on the aspect of humility as a way of working with God?
Uh I also see it as uh, as in everything that I do.
Yes.
I give God the glory, I don't take the, the, the glory or, you know, the, the, the accolades. God receive the glory, if there is something that I have achieved and people are happy about it and they are praising me. I, it's always uh he merits to, to point to them that it is not me. All the honor and glory goes to God who has enabled me to do A, B, C, D. So, it's to give, to reflect all the glory and honor to God in everything that I do, I achieve. Or in a, in anything good that comes from any of my activities, thank you.
Okay, wow. Giving God the glory. Yeah, i, 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 it is very, it is very okay. It's very okay not to accept the praises of men. Sometimes uh praises of men may take you out of the presence of God, just like you are putting it. And now you are saying humility, our, in, in terms of working with God means. Everything you do, you recognize that he is the one who is working through you. And so, he's the one who should receive all the glory, however powerful or however immense. God is uh using you. Thank you so much, Marcy, you had a point.
Uh I, I just wanted to say.
Yes.
To be, to be humble according to me is. Uh not being pretentious, you know, some things we do. And then we pretend it's, it's God, but deep down. It is, it's not. So, someone who is unpretending, any, you have a low opinion of yourself, you are not that proud. You can show other people that you're not proud, but in yourself, you are not. So, yeah, that is being humble to me. If it's God, then all the praises are for him and not for yourself. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, being real. Of um whatever you are doing, God taking the glory still comes back to, to my Mary's point of uh you not taking the glory. Thank you. Any other?
For, for me, I, I feel, when I have myself in uh front of God. I feel like I allow him to give me more guidance. I allow him to work in my, in my life the way he wants. And I feel his presence is with me when I'm just humble. And when I have myself, I know God uplifts me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Keep, God giving you guidance, very true.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you see, um let's use for example uh in a, in, 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 in a setup of a, of a, an organization. Where we have the boss and we have the, the workers, the casual workers. And uh if a boss gives you a directive. And you don't do it, you all know the repercussion. However, however much inconvenience it may be on your side, but just because he is the boss or he is above you. You will find a way on how to, to do it, even if. You will find a way on how to, to do it, even if you didn't like it. And so if God gives you, if, if God is the one who is giving you guidance, you have ensured. That you cannot lead yourself, so you have humbled yourself before him and you have allowed him to lead you. Wherever he, the, which, whichever path, sorry, whichever paths he leads you to, that is what you will follow. Uh, Santi Sana? Another point? We are taking two? Somebody wants to speak? Okay. And that's basically what it's all about when we talk of the humility. In working with God, we've spoken of being submissive. You submit yourself fully to him, actually, Miano stated James four seven. We say, uh, submit yourself to God. So if, if, if you are submitting to an authority, then it means you have humbled yourself. And you are exercising humility. Uh, then another person talked about giving glory to God. Which means, uh, you do not take credit of whatever thing you do. You are, you have identified or you have realized rather that everything that you do. It is God who is enabling you to do them. So you cannot stand and start to brag that you did it on your own. If, if, if pride comes in it, remember what the Bible says, that God opposes the proud. And he exalts the humble. So in, in, in a matter of working with God, when you include the humility, then there is exaltation. As the Bible puts it, God exalts those who are humble, but he opposes them that are, that are proud. And so, um. Working with God, we can say that is, 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 is just, um, like that. Humility and obedience. And by the way. Before we continue, we have humility and we have simplicity. What is the difference between humility and simplicity? Anybody here, I'm only just taking two answers, the difference between simplicity and humility. You might think that you are simple, you might think that you are humble and yet you are only simple. What is the difference between simplicity and humility? The first two. Hello? Are you people getting me?
Yes, Mia.
Yes, we are getting.
Oh, you've just decided to be quiet, okay. What is the difference between simplicity and humility?
I have read. I have read.
You have?
Because I've Googled. I'm being honest.
Okay, okay, fine, read for us.
Simplicity is a character, is a characteristic of greatness. It means doing what is necessary and remaining balanced. Humility is the quality of being humble.
Okay.
These both are great values, virtues, yeah.
Okay. So both are virtues.
They are both virtues, great virtues.
Great virtues.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, while working with God, do not be simple and, and think that you are humble. You need to be humble, you should not be simple, you need to be, need to be humble while working with God. And so, um. That takes me back to a point which one of us gave. That, uh, you choose to work with God. Actually, you can, you can decide to work with God, it is, working with God is, 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 it is a lifestyle. Because we can either work in the ways of the world and as well as work with God. Now, Amos three, three. Amos three, three, if anybody is in a position to read, you can read for us, Amos three, three.
I can read.
Okay, yes, you can go ahead.
Do two walk together unless they have agreed to do so?
Thank you. Do two walk together unless they have agreed to do so? That is why I said it is bringing us back to the point when one of us gave by saying. That working with God is a choice. It's a choice that you have to make. You can either decide to work with him or you decide not to work with him. Now, in reference to Amos three, three, do two walk together unless they agree. What can you say about choosing to work with God? I repeat, in reference to Amos three, three. Where Prophet Amos is asking by, by saying, do two walk together unless they agree? In your choice which you made, uh, to work with God, you decide that you want to work with him. What can you say about the choice of working with God?
Uh, Bonatia, if I can respond?
Yes, Miano.
Uh. Uh huh. There is a verse in Revelation, I think, Revelation three, two, this is for sure, someone can confirm. It says, I think, behold, I stand on the door and knock. So that verse, uh, it is mind boggling to me because one, Jesus is Lord. But again, apart from being Lord, he's, he's also a gentleman in that he can't force himself on me. So, uh, again, what's the end of the verse in the sermon, if, if I open, he will come in and eat with me and I will eat with him. So in relation to your question, I think, uh, it is upon me to. Come into an agreement to want to work with him because he's made the invitation for me to come. And coming to the verse, yeah, I will prepare a table for you in the, uh, the presence of your enemies. So, yeah, yeah, Shanda Mesa, it is only for me to receive the invitation card and make my attend, make my presence, uh, in the table, I'm on the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you just quoted Revelation three twenty. Which says, behold, I stand at the door and I knock. So you are saying you can decide to open the door or you, you, you remain closed inside. So it is a choice which you have to make, the ball is in your court, is that is? Is that what you mean, Miano?
Yes, Bonamodrita, that is what I mean.
Okay, thank you. Any other? When we talk about can two work together unless they agree? What do you think about the choice of working with God or making choices when it comes to working with God?
Uh, I would also note that God has made the offer.
Yes.
He's pursuing us, he's looking for us, extending his hand to us, but he does not force us. It has to be our choice to do so. But he is pursuing us on a daily basis, in different situations, circumstances. Just urging us, come and behold, here is my heart, behold, as we walk together, it's a choice, I have to make that choice.
Okay. Thank you. It is, it is, it is an offer. Wow, that, that's a very, that's a very, very huge term. It is an offer, no persuasion, you are being persuaded, you are being persuaded rather, you are not being forced. It is, the offer is given to you. It is the same thing, uh, when Moses was talking to the children of Israel. In the book, in the book of Deuteronomy thirty, uh, that today, behold, I put before you life and death. Choose one, but you went ahead to tell them what to choose. And of course, he told them, choose life that you may live. So it is an offer which is being given to us, so it is us to decide. Whether we want to accept the offer or we want to decline the offer. Thank you so much. Any other? And in case anybody has, uh, aired out the view and maybe you want to build on that, you are free to do so. And maybe you want to ask a question, you are free to do so. So any other point in regards to Amos three, three on choices, our choice while working with God? Any other? Okay. Uh, we, silence means we are okay, so I want us to do one last thing, then we, we have an open invitation for question. And then, um, we will just be done. Now, when you, we, we are, remember, we are still doing what it entails to work with God. Working with God is a lifestyle. And just like I said, you can decide either to work in the ways of the world. And also decide to work in the ways of God. And just to echo what somebody also said prior, to work with God means we choose to glorify him in every way we come. Regardless of the personal cost, so you are working with God should always be directed. To glorifying God in every way you can, regardless of the personal cost. And if there is any cost, then you will only. Be doing it at the expense of you pleasing God. Then working with God can also mean that we should not work with evil people as companions. The writer of Psalms, when he's opening the Psalm in the book of Psalms one, from verse one to three. If you are there, you can read for us, Psalms one, one to three, Psalms chapter number one. From verse one to three, anybody there? Psalms, chapter one, from verse one to three.
I read, let me read. Blessed is the man.
Yes, Mary, you can continue.
Blessed is the one who does not walk in the step. In step with the wicked or start in the way that sinners take. Or sit in the company of mockers. But whose delight is in the law of the Lord and who meditates on his law day and night. That person is like a tree planted by streams of water, which yields its fruits in season. And whose leave does not wither. Whatever they do, prospers. Up to verse three.
Yes, thank you, welcome. Now, the Bible starts by saying blessed is the man. That does not walk in the companion of evil dears, that is just a paraphrase of what, uh, the Bible says. So it means when you walk to work with God. Means you do not, you cannot also, you cannot work with God. At the same time, you work with evil people as you are companions. There is always a saying which goes, uh, that any source of water cannot produce clean water. And at the same time, it produces dirty water. The source will only produce one. If it is producing a clean water, it will be clean water. If it is producing a dirty water, it will be a dirty water. So in terms of working with God, you have to separate yourself from them that does not. Um, recognize, recognize God. So we don't live to please our, our sinful flesh, but we seek to eliminate it from, 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 um. From, from our lives, everything does not, that, that does not enhance our work with him. We cannot come in terms with it. When you are working with God, whatever pleases you will actually please God. And whatever does not please you also does not please God, that is the point which Anok reached. So God saw it wise not to wait for him to die, but God just decided to take him. Just look at that, um, as, as we finish, just look at that, um, situation. Anok was just human being as us, he chose, just like we have said. He made the deliberate decision to work with God and he worked with him faithfully. So another aspect of working with God, you have to be faithful in working, in working with him. So that you do not, uh, you do not become the sort of people Jesus was talking about. That get behind me for I do not know you. And you will start to claim, we prophesied, we healed the sick, we exorcised demons. But if you are not faithful with working with God, then it will be, you can work in with him, yes. But if you are not faithful, then, um, it will be, it will be vain. So concerning what we have, um, we have done today, what it entails to work with God, working with God entails. Very, very many things, just like we have said. Obedience to his command, doing the right things, listening to him through his word, seeking his guidance in prayer. You prayerfully seek him, then we have also said you trust in him, then you make a choice, it is an offer. But every offer which is being given, you will have to get out of your comfort zone and go for the offer. No offer is being given and it is just left there, there is a part with the recipient has to do. So it is also our part to choose to work with God, not forgetting about Revelation three twenty. Behold, I stand at the door knocking, it is your decision to either open or you remain closing. Then you've talked about the aspect of humility when working with God, being submissive. Everything you do, giving God the glory and also God giving, giving you guidance. And so maybe if any of us, you have any question or you have any point you want to put across. or any clarification you want to hear, uh, the platform is yours before we conclude. Hello? Any clarification, any question? Okay. Uh, it's as if people, 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 people are really, God is really helping us and we are, we are getting this thing. Uh, so thank you so much for making it for the study. Just like I said, by saying it is, it is a series. And maybe if you have any question concerning working with God, you can just reach out and we also make it part uh, of the, we, we try to see how and where to put it and where to involve it. And now, having said that, I think we, we, I am going to give us a chance to introduce ourselves now that we are only two minutes past seven. Just to say hi, then we are going to close with a word of prayer. Yes. We can start from, um, let me see. We can start from Lisa.
Yeah, yes. All right, my name is Lisa. I belong to Sivo Uhuru District, I'm the deacon there. And I sent a Santa moderator. This was really insightful and a very good idea. And I'm sure will be encouraging others to join in. Uh, I sent any son, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Lisa. Thank you also for attending. I, Mary Gary?
Thank you, moderator. My name's Mary Gary from Rubia District. I, I, I love Bible study and because the word of God is new every day. It was very good and very insightful. You learn something new every day and I look forward to the series. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you so much for attending. Who is this using Galaxy top eight, twenty sixteen?
Yeah, praise God.
Amen.
My name's Nancy Wayrago. A member of South Rad West District. I feel so blessed to have joined this group and I'm looking forward for the sales. As Mary said, the word of God is new each and every moment. I thought working with God was just simple, but according to the questions and how far we have gone, I've learned so many, many things. It's not just easy to say, I'm working with God. And I feel like we are going to be blessed as we continue. And I'm so happy for the start. God bless you.
Amen, thank you so much for, for the feedback. Uh huh, Masie?
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm, I'm Masie in Katha, I'm from, I don't know if I should say I was or I am. Okay, I'm still from Gay Two District, but now I'm in the youth districts. I am the vice chair of the youth. And this is really nice. I've actually learnt a lot. Yes, working with God is a journey and all that. And also hearing from other people who are in the same journey, just like you. It really encourages us as the youth in the Christian journey. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for the feedback and also for the sentiments. Joki?
Um, Joki Vashanga from K M district. Um, yes, it has been an insightful session and look forward to the other four. Because I believe this is how we grow each other and well done for the initiative.
Santa Sana? Chuguna, Mina? Are you there, Mina? Okay, Rose?
Did you say Rose? Or am I too eager? My name is Rose Kyirigo. I'm from Bagatti District. Um, usually I have another Bible study that I have on Tuesday evenings. Today, for some reason, we didn't meet. And I was going through my messages and I saw the link to this Bible study and I said, wow, what a beautiful compensation. I, I just like to be in the presence of the, of the Lord. And, and so just being together with you, I feel very fulfilled. So I will not promise I'll be there every Tuesday because like you here, I have another one in, on Tuesday evenings. But it's been nice to even see, um, friends I haven't seen, but I have, who have been in my thoughts for quite a while, like Mary Gary and Nancy. And just to hear that you are well, it's, it's, it's worth having joined this fellowship. And I'm excited that there is this forum. I know that a lot of times, um, our church has tried the Bible study, but without great success. I think because of the physical, the physical part of it. But with the online, I know that it's going to make great strides and, and, and maybe if I'm allowed, just by word of mouth, let's talk about now the presence of this online Bible study so that it can grow and that we can be blessed in our numbers. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Hallelujah, thank you.
Amen. Yeah, thank you, thank you also for the recommendation. I have noted it down and we look into it and the appropriate action will be surely taken. And then someone was just joined right now to him, or to her, sorry, was joined now. We, we have just finished our session one of our Bible study and we are just introducing ourselves. You can have the privilege of telling us who you are. As we conclude. Karibu Lucy?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, I've just joined. I'm sorry, I've just joined. I wanted to join area, but it wasn't possible. So I don't know how far you have covered.
Okay, not to worry. Uh, the meeting has been recorded and it will be shared as soon as we finish. Uh, you can go through it, but for today, we are sorry, we are done. Okay.
Thank you, I'll try to be earlier next time.
Yes, okay, thank you. Try to be early next time, we are starting at exactly six and by seven we should be done. So thank you so much, um, for making it for day one. And without you, this Bible study will not be a success. So we can plan, but if we don't initiate the plan or rather we don't have them to support us in implementation of the planning, then it will not be a success. So keep on, uh, attending, mobilize members of your districts. And several districts have been represented here. If you know you have learnt and you also wish your friends also to learn and to gauge more on working with God, then it will be very unfair for you not to tell them. So the ball remains in your court. I advise us to reach out to them, ask them just to spare one hour Tuesday evening just to attend the Bible study and God will really bless us. Apologies for evangelists. He opted out of the meeting due to some impediments, but I believe next time he will be here with us till the end. But for them that joined after he had left, he was here and is the one who started us. And so, um, let me take this opportunity to ask Mamrose to pray with us even as we finish today's session. Karibu Sana.
All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful because of just giving us the privilege to hear from you and just to learn, to be instructed by you, to be corrected. I pray Father, even as we begin, um, the Bible study fellowship in this season, that you would speak to us individually and that we would not only be hearers of your word, but that indeed we would be doers of it. I pray Father, that even as we continue to commune together on Tuesday evenings, that you would indeed increase our faith and that you would bless us immensely. As we depart Jehovah, I pray that the Holy Spirit will live within us, would guide us and guard us. As we go to sleep, Father, I pray that you would be with us, even in our dreams, oh Lord. Be close to us in all our endeavors. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen, thank you so much. We can all unmute. We can all unmute and share the words of grace as we end the meeting. Now be the grace.
Please, so far.
Lord Jesus Christ. Have the love of God and the worship of the Holy Spirit.
With us now.
With us now, forever, forevermore.
Amen.
Amen. So much, God bless you and have a blessed week.
Amen.
God bless you.
Santa, God bless.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.